Good evening and welcome to the Proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. Today is Monday, March 2nd. Will you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Lewis, will you take the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Baker is excused. Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Flores is excused. Ms. Lewis is here. Reverend Mathias?
Present.
Mr. Ross?
Present.
President Grant is excused. Vice President Shotkey?
Present.
May I have a motion for approval of the agenda, please?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Good, motion carries. Dr. Gorman, celebrations.
Madam Vice President, members of the board, I would like to ask Dr. Maida Gunno to come forward. She'll be introducing the winners of the Warner, Norcross, and Judd Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest. Dr. Gunno.
Good evening, Dr. Gorman, Vice President Shotkey, and board members. This evening, we are here to celebrate the winners of the MLK Essay Contest, and I'd like to introduce you to Keishi Muthakata, and she will be here to announce the winners.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. So glad to be here. Madam President, members of the school board, interim superintendent, Dr. Gorman. My name is Keishi Muthakuta. I'm the Career Development Manager at Warner, Norcross, and Judd. I'm also a member of the firm's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion and Action Committee. We are very proud to have sponsored the 15th Annual MLK Junior Essay Contest for sixth graders in the Grand Rapids Public School System. Through this contest, we encourage students to reflect on the lasting impact of Dr. King's teachings and consider how we can advance his work. We actually had a teacher from the MLK Leadership Academy write to us and say, "As we studied Dr. King's words, we learned a lot about ourselves," and were encouraged to fortify our finer attributes and subdue the things hurtful to our school, community, family, and our own self. This year, to reduce possible unconscious bias in scoring, students, teachers, and school names were removed from the essays prior to judging. We would like to thank Malika Brown, who unfortunately was unable to be here tonight, who is the Director of Equity and Inclusion, for her invaluable assistance with this year's contest. We received 334 essays from students representing 17 schools. More than 60 Warner employees in each of our eight offices across the state participated in reading and scoring the essays. It's an incredible experience to read the essays and see the world through the eyes of these sixth graders. It was not an easy decision, but we selected three contest winners and 24 honorable mentions. All students that participated will receive a certificate of participation, whereas winners and honorable mentions will receive gift cards to Schuler Books and Music. Before we invite the top three students to read their essays to the board, I would like to acknowledge the students who received an honorable mention award. When I call your name, please come forward and get your certificate. First is Cristiano Abutu at Riverside Middle School. Ian Clark, Blandford School. Beatrice Kilburn, Center for Econom- Economicology. Sorry, I think I missed a few of the school names. I'll read those in a few. She's also at the Center for Economicology. Next is Owen Churnus. I'm sorry. Owen was at the Center for Economicology. Navea is at the Riverside Middle School. Next is Kiara Love, Grand Rapids Montessori. Annabella Mercario, Martin Luther King Jr. Leadership Academy. Elijah Montgomery at Shawmet Hills. Sylvia Morton at Grand Rapids Montessori. Emily Paris at North Park Montessori. Azaria Powell Shawmet Hills. Yanelle Viss Rodriguez, Martin Luther King Jr. Leadership Academy. Emmanuel Tesfaye, Center for Economicology. Nan Tran, Center for Economicology. Enna Weiner, Blandford School. Bria Williams, Grand Rapids Montessori. Serenity Willis, Westwood Middle School. I would now like to call up this year's winners to read their essay one at a time and receive their gift certificate and their certificate and gift card. We will begin with this year's runner-up, Reese Wilcox at John Ball Zoo School. Yes. Would you like to take a seat here?
I feel in the United States of America, we have made a lot of progress toward racial equity since 1968, but I think there is still room for improvement. Some of the things we can improve on are education, everyday life, dining, and public transportation. One way we have made progress is in schools. In 1968, there were thousands of racially segregated schools. Many of the schools that African-American children had to go to were small, unclean, overcrowded, and had a lack of supplies and teachers. The schools that white children went to were usually very nice, large, clean, and had many supplies. This was a disadvantage to the African-American kids. A good education is one of the building blocks to a successful life. The students that were white were able to access the resources that helped set them up for success. Today, schools have a lot more diversity than schools back then. In Kentwood Public Schools, 36% of students are white and 30% of students are African-American. The other 34% is made up of other ethnicities. There is more of a balance of races than there were in 1968, but this is still a huge issue in the U.S., and we need to try to build on what Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said in his speech and try to have more racial equity in schools. In addition to that, we have also made progress in everyday life. In 1968, African-Americans couldn't use the same water fountains as white people, dine in the same restaurants, swim in the same pools, or use the same restrooms as white people. Finally, after many influential people spoke up about this and how it was an old tradition, very unfair, and very unfair, people started to see how unfair this was to African-Americans. Today, the African-Americans and whites share water fountains, pools, restaurants, etc. The Civil Rights Act helped to change racial barriers that were prominent in the 1960s. There are still some changes that need to be made, though. For example, at a Buffalo Wild Wings in Chicago, Illinois, a customer did not want to eat dinner next to a black family sitting across the table from them. The staff that night made the African-American family move to the other side of the restaurant. The manager found out and was furious. He hired, he fired the waiter and staff that forced the family to move. So, we still need to make progress in our everyday lives toward racial equity. In the United States, we have made progress in making public transportation more discrimination-free. In 1955, Rosa Parks was sitting on a bus in Montgomery, Alabama, to go home after a long day of work standing on her feet. At this point in time, African-Americans were forced to move to the back of the bus or stand if a white person wanted their seat. A white man came onto the bus and demanded that Rosa get up and move. She refused and got put in jail. This is only one example of discrimination in public transportation, but there are thousands more people who face racial discrimination on a bus whose stories were never told. As a society, we have made some progress, but we need to work on making public transportation completely racial discrimination-free. In October of 2019, in Utah, a mixed-race teenage boy was getting on a public bus to go to school. When he was getting off the bus, the driver accidentally closed the door on the boy's backpack. He drove more than 100 feet dragging the boy by his backpack before he stopped the bus. This is another example of racial discrimination on public transportation. In conclusion, the United States of America has made some progress in terms of racial equity, but there is still so much we could do to make the United States completely free of racism. Unfair schooling, restaurants, and public transportation are just some of the places where, in 2020, there is still racial discrimination. There are many more places we need to improve on this. For example, the workplace, housing, healthcare, sentencing, college applications, the list could go on for miles, which means, in the U.S., we really need to work on making all of these things equal for every human being, despite their gender, income, housing, or race. As Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said in his final speech, "We've got to see it through. And when we have our march, you need to be there. If it means leaving work, if it means leaving school, be there. Be concerned about your brother. You may not be on strike, but either we go up together or we go down together. Let us develop a kind of dangerous unselfishness." We can develop this unselfishness by educating our society, increasing awareness about racial equity, and having real conversations about what is going on and how we can change it for the better. But we can only do this if we all work together. Thank you.
The first runner-up winner is Luke Swanson from Grand Rapids Montessori.
Our world is flawed, and not just physically. As Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "There are literally two Americas," and he was right. While there are not actually two identical United States of America, the racial segregation in the '50s was strong, and it divided the country. And though it's been toned down heavily, it's still here. Black people are constantly afraid to go into neighborhoods where they are the minority, and they do have reasons to be on edge. Yes, as of 2020, we are at quite a low point for racism. Things definitely aren't as bad as they were in the 1950s, or worse, the 1800s, but if I'm being honest, slavery hasn't stopped. America may not be forcing African-Americans to make tobacco anymore, but there's something similar: sweatshops. In this day and age, Asians too poor to make ends meet, including children, are forced to manufacture the products people on the right side of the tracks take for granted. Conditions in these awful factories are so bad, safety nets were recently added to stop workers from jumping off their roofs and killing themselves. In America, black people are no longer enslaved or segregated, but they are still often denied being treated equally, or like people, for that matter. A white driver could speed 100 miles an hour down a busy street and simply get a ticket, whereas a black driver could be well below the speed limit and get arrested. How on earth is that justice? Examples like that go back to Martin Luther King Jr.'s speech from 1968 called "The Other America." As he said in it, "Large segments of white society are more concerned about..." "More concerned about tranquility and the status quo than about justice and humanity." It's been proven time and time again that this is true. Pulling examples out of the millions, Rosa Parks was arrested for taking a stand against segregation on buses. Then Martin Luther King Jr. was silenced for good by an assassin's bullet. In 2009, Alex Landau was pulled over by white police and searched, and when he asked to see a warrant, he was brutally assaulted and nearly killed. And let's never forget the black school worker who was pulled over with his young daughter and girlfriend and searched. He did have a gun in his car, but he had a permit for it, and he explained this very clearly to the officers. On that day, without doing anything wrong, and in front of his family, he was shot and killed. Because of police brutality and racism, two lives were ruined and one was ended, and the killers got minor slaps on the wrist. Even with all those examples, I've barely scratched the surface of racist events in the country that's supposed to be a melting pot of cultures, colors, and people. And it isn't just people native to America, no. Day by day, immigrants desperate for a new start are turned away and deported, possibly to their deaths. This certainly isn't helped by our current president, who plans to build a border wall between Mexico and the United States and then make the former pay for it. American border guards are turning away people based on what they look like, and that is completely unacceptable. It's time for us to do something about it. This brings me to another topic, which is how we've improved since times of slavery and how we need to improve. As I said before, we still show support for slavery somewhat, as shown by the sweatshops that unfortunately still exist. Finding an alternative to child labor is definitely a must, as it is unfortunately still legal in some places. While it is illegal in most places, they are paid very little money for backbreaking work making products such as iPads and iPhones, when kids shouldn't be working in the first place and rich companies could just make those products themselves. I would say that there have been a lot of improvements since the 1800s. Black people don't have to sit in the back of the bus anymore, and white people are a little more accepting. However, there are still a lot of problems that need to be solved, or else, as Martin Luther King Jr. said, "We're all going to perish together as fools." Firstly, there need to be new laws regarding police. Police officers should be a sign of protection and safety for everyone, yet for black people, they're a symbol of fear and danger. Police brutality has taken many lives over the years, and it usually goes unpunished. Also, white people are constantly calling the police on black people, and most of the time, the black people aren't doing anything wrong. Look, if you see a black person committing a crime, go ahead and call the police. They don't deserve any more leniency than white people, and vice versa. But if you call the police on someone who's not doing anything, you should be legally punished for wasting the operator's time. This final topic is just my opinion, but I do feel like it should become a reality. In my opinion, races should not exist. America should be a melting pot of people and cultures, and race is just a lie. We don't need to be classified as different species based on our languages and looks. We are all one species: humans. We are technically all related, so let's act like it and stop judging each other for what we are. Thank you.
Last but not least, we are very proud to announce this year's grand prize winner, Lydia Taylor at Center for Economicology.
There are people in this world who will never be able to understand the impact they made. One is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. He broke barriers and didn't harm anyone. He believed that no matter who you are, what you have done, and where you come from, you are welcome to be a person of the same rights as everyone. In 1968, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. made a speech called "The Other America." In this speech, he made the point that there are literally two Americas. One is amazing and beautiful; one is terrible and ugly. We live in the terrible America. In that speech, he expressed the fact that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. By making the speech, he was responding to injustice in a constructive manner. With everything that is going on today in our America, we need to use his ways and other ways to solve injustice. One way is to use peace. MLK never used violence, he only used peace. Peace can be very hard at times, especially in our America. We just want to get it over with, and sometimes that results in violence. It can be hard to use peace with so much hatred. We think that violence is the only way to go against the hatred, but peace is an amazing way to solve anything. MLK loved peace. He was the youngest person to be awarded Nobel Peace Prize in 1964. We can solve injustice with peace. Ways to use peace are speeches and sermons like MLK did. We can also stay positive, be thankful for everything, and be kind. A quote about peace is, "Be the peace you wish to see in the world." That was from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Another way is to love instead of hate. Love can break all barriers, it can solve any problem or injustice. Hate can't do that. Hate has one power, and it is to destroy. Hate destroys everything that is good. Hate goes as far as to destroy the hater. Love can heal wounds, treat sick, give to the poor, and find hope for the hopeless. Hate can't do that. We must save its love. They're two very good quotes about love and hate. "I've chosen to love; hate is too great a burden to bear." MLK. "Fear leads to anger; anger leads to hate; hate leads to suffering." Yoda. Another way is to be kind. Kindness is very important because it can make you feel good about yourself. Kindness is also very important because it can go a long way. By simply saying hello to someone you see can make them a bit happier, so they will spread that small act of kindness to others. Others will spread it. Soon, the kindness may return to you. Using kind words in tough situations can change anything. It can bring peace or show someone that they're loved. Kind words maybe have, may even have enough power to stop any war. Maybe the reason we can't just be kind sometimes is that we think kindness is a big power. But kindness can be used by simply smiling or giving an honest compliment. MLK was always kind. He listened to people, which is a huge quality of a truly kind person. So by using simple acts of kindness, MLK changed the world and solved his injustices. And kindness can do anything. Who knows? Maybe someday, a simple smile from one person will change the world. A quote about kindness is, "Kindness is a gift, and everyone can afford to give." Unknown. We can use these ways and more to solve injustices in a constructive manner. MLK used these ways to solve his injustices, and look how far we have come since then. No matter who you are, what you have done, or where you come from, you are welcome to see, to the same rights as everyone. We are now getting closer to being the beautiful America, but will we go back? Be loving and kind. Call everyone to your table of kindness.
Thank you again to all of our wonderful and very talented students and to the school board for your continued collaboration in this contest. I'd like to request that the students who are present, please meet in the hallway for a group photo. If you can please excuse the students. And once again, just a round of applause for all of your hard work.
All right, now it's time for our reports from our student representatives. Ms. Valmentio, may we start with you this evening? Thank you.
Wow, I'm speechless. It really warmed my heart to see some of the, some bright future leaders in this room. As it for reports, we had our annual Black History Month Assembly at Innovation Central High School. We had guest speakers, and many of the students shared personal stories of their ancestors, which were very impactful, impactful for all of us. And now we're looking forward to celebrate Women's History Month this March. Innovation Central has also gotten 80% of their seniors to fill out FAFSA forms and sign up for Promise Zone, and I know for sure that other GRPS high schools are working towards getting their students to sign up for the Promise Zone, so thank you for that.
Great, thank you for your report. Ms. Benson?
Good evening, everyone. I have three celebrations to share with you from City. First, our middle school swim team took first place in the middle school swim tournament, so they're excited about that. Our second celebration is Girl Up, which is a student-led organization at City. It is celebrating Women's History Month this month by having a women's empowerment session, March 11th, after school. Lastly, our student-led Black History Month Assembly took place last Thursday with the student leading being me. It was a great time. We focused on the arts this year, and the arts were poetry, dance, jazz, and singing. Something that I really wanted to emphasize was that you do not have to be black to appreciate the culture and the contributions from black people. And so, a featured local artist in the community, and I think that the students had a very great time.
Wonderful, thank you, Ms. Benson, and thank you for your leadership at your school. It's wonderful. All right, Ms. Lewis, do we have any public comment for board agenda items?
None for the board agenda.
Very good. Onto the secretary's report, please.
I just have two brief announcements regarding two committees that are going to meet. The Academic Achievement Committee will meet on Wednesday, March 4th, at 4:30 in Board Chambers, Grand Rapids Public Schools Administration Building, and the Legislative Committee will meet on Wednesday, March 11th, at 11:00 a.m. in Room 101 of the Grand Rapids Public School Administration Building.
Thank you. Next, we have the Grand Rapids Promise Zone Authority Board of Directors meeting update. Mr. Helmhold, will you join us?
Good evening, Vice President Shotkey, members of the board, Dr. Gorman. Just a quick update, we're continuing to make progress on implementation of the Promise Zone Scholarship. We, a couple of things that took place at the Promise Zone Authority Board is they did recognize two additional schools from the original list. As you might recall, there were 22 schools. However, we learned about two additional schools that are actually located within the city limits of Grand Rapids. One was the West Michigan Aviation Academy, and the other one is Next Tech, which is not only an online academy, they do have physical classrooms that meet during the week. And so, the board looked at it from a lens of inclusivity and added those to the Promise Zone Scholarship. Last Friday, there were 982 scholarship award letters that were sent out to students throughout the city informing them of their eligibility for the Promise Zone Scholarship. 945 of those were full scholarships, 37 were partial, meaning that those individuals didn't reside in the district until their 11th grade. So, they get 50% of the scholarship instead of 100%. The board, GRPS and GRCC are working together right now to provide college readiness support for those graduating seniors in the district for this, the end of this semester, as well as in the extended school year in the summer. We'll have more details on that as that gets solidified. The other part is that the Promise Zone authorities are in the process of interviewing and hiring the Promise Zone director. There's an interim director right now at GRCC. They also entered into agreements with the Grand Rapids Community College and the Grand Rapids Community College Foundation to administer the scholarships. They've also held FAFSA nights, and we will have a letter going to all GRPS They've also held FAFSA nights, and we will have a letter going to all GRPS families with additional information, just making sure that our families are aware that this is being part of GRPS. Living in the city, you're eligible for this Promise Zone Scholarship.
Wonderful, great update. Thank you so much. Okay, yes, great, things done. All right, committee chair updates. Finance first, Ms. Williams.
Well, our primary updates will be a part of our action items tonight, so I will defer into that time. As, yeah, Mr. Olveris and I believe Mr. Helmhold will provide us information as well.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Legislative Committee, Reverend Mathias.
Yeah, we met and we looked over our priorities, and I thought I would just read just a partial part of that. The Grand Rapids Board of Education wants the state of Michigan to be a top-10 state in the nation for students' achievement. This includes building an inclusive team and setting statewide priorities, studying and learning from top-performing states and nations, creating a shared statewide vision, benchmarking policies inadequately and equitably, investing to meet the academics and social and emotional needs of all students. And so, I just want us to be aware that we're going before the state and really, rather than complaining, really looking at being a place to be looked to, both for advice, but then also cutting edge. And so, really excited to see what's going to happen this year in our Legislative Committee.
Thank you. And Policy Committee, Ms. Davis.
Okay, we had some discussion over Policy 8670, which you have in your packets, but we just had to amend that to include students who are going to be working with the nurses, and they will be administering medications as well. They will be trained by the nurses, and the nurses will watch as they administer, but that needed to be added.
College students, to be clear.
Correct, yes. And Bylaw 1180 is adding our Policy Committee and Legislative Committee as standing committees because they've been working for a while now and look forward to continuing on with that work, so.
Great, thank you for your report. Superintendent's report, Dr. Gorman.
Madam Vice President, members of the board, we have two reports this evening. I'd like to ask John Helmhold to come forward. He'll be updating us on the annual Grand Rapids Neighborhood Summit, as well as Exploration Week.
So, this Saturday, March 7th, is the Grand Rapids Neighborhood Summit 2020 with the theme "Growing Justice in Community." It's from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Pugh Campus of Grand Valley State University. We have been active participants and organizers on the Steering Committee for the Neighborhood Summit since its inception, and we're just really excited to see. The focus is going to be on various environmental topics, leveraging strategies, grassroots organizing, and really showing up in solidarity for justice. So, we're excited to see this. Individuals, if they're interested in signing up, registering, can go to the city's website at grcity.us. The other upcoming activity in several weeks is the Exploration Week. So, Grand Rapids Public Schools is hosting the Exploration Week, March 23rd through the 27th. This is to help families prepare for that transition into kindergarten. So, each of our elementary schools is hosting their own kindergarten event. Explorers can expect tours of the school, visit with world-class teachers, discover what the child will learn in kindergarten, and more. For those who want to learn more, they can go, a complete list of all the schools, the dates, the times of the different events, they can go to grps.org\explore.
Thank you, Mr. Helmhold. Onto our action items. The first action item this evening is the Purchasing Agenda. Are there any questions on the Purchasing Agenda? All right, may I have a motion for the Purchasing Agenda approval, please? Motion to approve the Purchasing Agenda.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker excused, Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores excused. Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Grant is excused, and Vice President Schottke?
Yes.
Our next action item is the Equity Audit Contract. Are there any questions or discussion on that item this evening?
I do have a question. I was just wondering, I'm assuming this was a RFP process, and I'm just curious if there were any, anyone closer to us than Denver who, I guess, put in something? Just more, just trying to think about local sort of opportunities, and this was the best of the bunch. Obviously, that's fine, but I guess I'm just wanting a little background on that.
Mr. Williams or Dr. Gorman, do you feel? Or Mr. Helmhold? Perfect.
So, following the committee, that was a question that came up at committee. There was not a formal RFP process, as that's not what's required. However, this was part of a really longstanding engagement where we had our theme school challenge last year. Among other things, we learned about a conference at MIT that was around equity and accessibility in school choice. While we were there, there was a very limited number of individuals that do this type of targeted equity work specific to enrollment and, in this case, choice schools. And so, we met with this gentleman who's the former head of Denver Public Schools, an individual we had contacted when he was in his previous role as the director, as we were studying best practices. Denver, he was a speaker at this conference. We continued that conversation over time and then had asked for a proposal. Following the committee meeting, we have received a couple different recommendations of individuals that we approached, and the ballpark is right around that $50,000 to $100,000 range. And so, we know this is important work. It speaks to our need to really unpack the neighborhood versus theme schools, and what we can do to ensure that we have an independent audit of our systems to see where our policies, our processes, the enrollment applications themselves, selection criteria, all the different things that we use in our enrollment and our theme application process to make those choices. And we're excited about this work. The gentleman from Ashbacher Consulting, he's doing a unified enrollment system in Tulsa, Oklahoma, has 40,000 students. They're doing a Common School Finder in Atlanta, Georgia, with 50,000 students. A unified, separate enrollment system, Oakland, California, that's 50,000 students. And then another in Cleveland, Ohio, very similar work for 53,000 students. He is the expert in his field, and we're eager and excited to do work with him.
Great. Mr. Ross, any other questions?
Just wondering if he has time for us? No, no other questions.
Great, looks like the timeline is to be complete by June 26, 2020, is that?
It's probably going to get extended a little longer. That was, they had assumed we'd start in January. We hit the pause button, we pumped the brakes a little bit, we wanted to take time to make sure we do the process right. That actually helps Brian out, so he'll have more time. At one point, the hope was that we could have the work done, recommendations made, and begin implementation for both our enrollment for fall of 2020, but also theme school application for 2021. We're likely to take time to really make sure we do it right, so the work for potential implementation would not be for next school year, it will be the following school year.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, can I have a motion for approval of the Equity Audit Contracts, please?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker's excused. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores is excused. Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Grant is excused, Vice President Schottke?
Yes.
Next action item is the Southwest Middle High School Lease with Fair State University. Are there any questions about this action item? Very good. May I have a motion for approval of the Lease with Fair State University?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores is excused. Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Grant is excused, and Vice President Schottke?
Yes.
The next action item is our Board Position in Support of Alternative Certification for Special Education Training. Any discussion or questions? Very good. May I have a motion for approval of our Board Position in Support of Alternative Certification for Special Education Training?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores is excused. Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Grant's excused, Vice President Schottke?
Yes.
The next action item is Bylaw 1180, Board Committees, and we received that update from Committee Chair Davis. Are there any questions about this policy? May I have a motion for approval of Bylaw 1180?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores is excused. Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Grant's excused, Vice President Schottke?
Yes.
And next, Policy 8670, Administration of Medication by School Personnel. Any discussion or questions on this policy? Okay, may I have a motion for approval of Policy 8670?
Motion to approve Policy 8670.
Support.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores is excused. Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Grant is excused, and Vice President Schottke?
Yes.
And our last action item of the evening is the Consent Agenda Grouping. May I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Vice President Schottke?
Yes.
We have no discussion items this evening. Do we have public comment for non-agenda items?
Yes, I believe we do.
Very good.
Before I call you up, I guess I should read the ground rules here. Individuals will be called to the speaker table to address the board during the subsequent public comment topic. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. You will need to state your full name before providing the comment. You will then start the timer at the beginning of your public comment time and provide you with a one-minute notice by flagging a red card indicating one minute remains. I think I'll just have to look up at you and give you that look, because we don't have a red card up here. You will need to complete your comment time upon being notified that three minutes have passed. Board members do not respond to public comment. Concerns will be brought to the attention of the appropriate staff. We value your input, and we thank you for sharing. So, should I call two or three?
Yeah, we'll call three up at a time, and we'll start that way.
Margot Thompson, Martha Cooper, and Rich Fink.
All right, welcome. Margot Thompson, may we begin with you?
It's Mary Jo.
Oh, Mary Jo, forgive us. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Mary Jo Thompson.
If you can just put the mic closer to you, that would be...
Honey, yeah, really?
Thank you.
My name's Mary Jo Thompson. I have a couple of questions. I have a comment also on the board items that I didn't know I was going to make until I saw it. First of all, I, as a person, as a parent, am embarrassed that these kids were all called tonight, and there were like five of them here out of like 20, 25 names she called. I don't know where the failure of that is, but these kids should be really proud of winning what they did. And they weren't here to experience, I think that's embarrassing as a school district. Second thing I have is that you have a Board Position in Support of Alternative Certification for Special Ed Training. Do you approve the position? I have no idea what your position is. How do we access this? Can I go on the website? I'm assuming John will tell me to find out what this is. It's also like the administration of medication. My kids are special needs, medication is very, very important to us. What's going on? You're talking about under a nurse's supervision, someone's giving my kid med. That's not going to happen. I will sign off on something that's just not going to happen. Now, I have some questions. I'd like to know what the current barriers the district has experienced in conversations regarding rising teachers' pay. Our teachers are paid nothing, which is also tied into a second question I have about the amount that the administration of GRPS is paid compared to what our teachers have. The amount that you are paid that we are doing now with fewer students than we did eight or 10 years ago. Why are our money that we're spending is way up here and our students are here? I have a question about that, because that just seems like we have a whole bunch of committees and we don't have the students that should be there to have that. I don't know, how do we incentivize our best teachers to teach in the neighborhood schools? I mean, you guys go all over for conferences, you're talking about going to MIT to find out stuff. Why aren't we finding this out? It's pretty basic. We just need to ask our teachers honestly. And how do we know, make sure we have enough subs and teachers in the school? My kids are in four different schools, and there are not enough teachers. Two of my children are in special, well, they're no longer GRPS, so I'm glad I don't have to do that. But other kids, they have no, no teachers in that classroom, or they have substitute teachers. They don't have the aides that they need in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. I just think that's a disgrace. That's my problem.
Thank you. Martha Cooper?
Hello, my name is Martha Cooper. I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I came tonight to support the organization, Grand Rapids Education Justice, as a parent. I'm appreciating that they have organized, because I'm just going to speak from my own personal experience. I also want to start out with the teacher pay. I know how much we're using, our kids are using substitutes. It's ridiculous. And when the students don't have stability because y'all refuse to pay for it with our money, then that tells students something, and that is what causes real damage. It tells them they're not important, that the system is more important, and they know it. When I speak about this system with the two-tier education system, I'm coming from a parent that was low-income when special ed wasn't paid for, and he was at Central High School. And that's about the time when they ended sports programs. Sports programs build relationships, and they bring fathers to kids that don't have them. They have a coach. They're learning things that moms who do it all can't teach them, because they're too busy working and surviving and being two parents. One of the things that really bothers me when we talk about equity is it's not just about color, it's about class. If we're really talking about equity and justice and being for the kids instead of for the system, because that's what I'm challenging you all on tonight. Be for the kids and not the system. So, so he didn't get what he needed, and he's still hurting. Right? Equity is a word they throw around in City Hall when we talk about the Promise Zone. I've been talking to City Hall about housing. How many kids in high school have been pushed out of this town because they couldn't afford the rent? Let's talk about that transportation system, and it ought to be free since it's publicly funded. And I'm going to need it if I'm going to get my kid to any school, because we don't do, we don't provide transportation anymore. But you all want to privatize and take away dollars. Now, let's talk about equity, since I have 30 seconds. We mainstream special ed kids, but we don't mainstream the really bright ones. We give them their own school, so you look like you're shining up front. But you're dropping my child out, and I realize I'm not black. But I'm speaking for them too, because their problems are mine.
Mr. Fink?
My name is Rich Fink, and I guess one of your agenda action items tonight was the Equity Audit. And I guess, hopefully, that will answer some of the questions that we've been coming to you. And I guess hopefully that will answer some of the questions that we've been coming to you with. And as I continue to delve into my research, looking at 17,000 students and 35 buildings, and only 12 of those are themed schools. And those themed schools each require an application. And four of those themed schools require specific information to be shared. And there are, excuse me, admission requirements for those schools. Only 17% of Grand Rapids Public School kids are able to attend those themed schools. And when I take a look at the scores across the district and I see the scores in those schools and I see the scores in the rest of the elementary and high schools, I see a wide disparity. And I guess what that brings me to is that it seems these scores indicate, again, this two-tiered system of education where we have the haves and we have the have-nots. We see it with the actual buildings. We see it with materials. We see it with the teachers that staff those buildings, the number of substitutes, the number of long-term substitutes. And I guess when I look at all of that information, I really question exactly where GRPS is going. Because it seems to me that we're promoting that two-tiered system, that we're promoting segregation and that segregation is not only based on color, but it's based on socioeconomic status and it's based on cognitive ability. So I asked the board, and I hope through this committee, that we will find out how to take care of the inequity that I see and how GRPS is going to ensure that every student in GRPS is afforded an equal opportunity to a quality education. Because I really don't feel that's happening now when I look at the data and statistics I see on GRPS. Thank you.
Ms. Lewis, will you call our next three?
Melissa Cortaid, Tony Jacobs, and Jack Prince.
Hi, Ms. Cortaid. Can we begin with you?
Yeah. Sorry, I have a cold.
That's water?
Nope. Trying to keep a bubble on me if I get anyone else set.
Can we have you move the mic a little closer?
First thing I wanted to say is I came to your superintendent interviews and super excited about your superintendent pick. I know that when we did a superintendent search in our district, I just had this feeling that we picked the right one. And when I sat through your interviews of your superintendents, that felt like the right pick. So I'm just, I'm really excited for Grand Rapids and I'm excited to see what's to come with that. But more, not more importantly, but why I'm here tonight is to support the Grand Rapids for Education Justice. One thing I love about working with this group is they collect a lot of data. And there's a lot of really good information out there and some really confusing information. So I'm just hoping that maybe one of you board members could help us. And just even looking at the map of the district, trying to figure out what is themed, what is a public school, a charter school. I know I come from a much smaller district, so it's really easy in mind to do that. But we recently visited the Discovery Center and it was just really interesting to me that it was a charter school, but it was chartered by Grand Rapids Public. And I've never heard of a charter school like that before. So just in kind of trying to decipher that data has been hard. So I'm hopeful that maybe I can ask some questions of the board that way. Or if there's a contact person, that would be, that would be great. But the one thing was interesting to me when we met with the really wonderful people at Discovery, they were just adamant that they were not a private school. But everything about them was private. So I just, that's another thing I'm having a hard time understanding. And that's just one school. But, I'm just a few more minutes. But as far as like themed schools and then I know that equity is a huge conversation around the state right now, just going to conferences and things like that. So I'll be interested to see your equity audit. So, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Jacobs?
Hi, good evening. I want to speak on teacher compensation. But first, I would actually like to point my comments to our student representatives. I have expressed my, you guys are great. So I have to say I'm uneasy speaking when the focus is on myself, public speaking. I don't even want to see how many people are behind me right now. I haven't turned my head since I got here. I'm just pretending it's just a couple people. For better or for worse, however, this is the only voice I've been given. And anyone, me, you, with a voice is obligated to use it when they feel that things are not right. And I have so much admiration for the students earlier reading their essays, sitting here reading it. I don't know if they had stage fright, but I have great admiration for them and I have admiration for your own ease seemingly in public speaking. So, and I hope that you nurture your voices to speak out against injustice as I think you are doing in any of its forms, in spite of any doubts you may have, in spite of people who tell you you're wasting your time, in spite of people who may try to keep you quiet because sometimes it's so much easier just to pretend everything is fine. Just keep pushing. Don't give up. As a parent of GRPS, of a GRPS student, my family is forever indebted to the teachers who have helped my daughter grow into the person she is today. Saying that, I am very concerned about these amazing individuals, these teachers, not being properly reimbursed and compensated compared to other educators in the area. Her freshman year at Grand Rapids Montessori, found her entire class in a gym for gym class with no gym teacher for nearly the entire year. The whole class sitting there for an hour with no adults, day after day. There was not even any communication from the school to myself as a parent. I had to rely on information from my 13-year-old daughter. She's a senior now. I think things are better now as they at least have substitutes, but I just, I can't get over that. She would go there and sit with her class for an hour in this empty gym. I want to end by asking the board, what are we doing about raising teacher pay? Especially when we see the administration using information that's publicly available, making salaries that appear to be above average among area districts? What is being done to attract educators to our schools, especially schools with high minority student populations? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Prince?
My name is Jack Prince. You know, it's a beautiful day today. The weather is fantastic and it's almost like spring was in the air. But then I got in the room and I heard equity was in the air. Equity's been in the air from our perspective for months now. But it must have been transmitted because I heard it spoken from these two seats during the interviews. The idea of equity, a two-tiered system was even mentioned within this boardroom. Pick up the newspaper. Equity's across the nation. It strikes in Indiana, West Virginia, Oklahoma. So I'm sitting with maybe 40 people behind here who also have equity on their mind. And that equity, I really believe we have focused into three specific areas. We had a press conference on the front steps to focus on those areas. We left them on that desk right there versus pay, compensation. And I think the excuse that we run into over and over again is, well, it's a state thing. There's state problems, funding is emanating out of Lansing and it's a problem. Well, that might be the case, but it's been a chronic reality in this district for decades that spanned many political administrations and political environments. So you really can't use that contemporary argument. Secondly, another excuse we hear repeatedly is, and I think this is really at the core of my message today, is that we're working on it. There's been some improvements. Cambridge sat in this district 12 years ago and said, you need to raise pay to increase the quality of education. So the idea that what we're working, we're going to get there, we're way ahead of that problem. Just like with the two-tiered system, you're telling us there's progress being made. Here's the deal. We can't sit when there's 5% of the students capable of going to college out of Ottawa High School. We can't sit when the number is similar to that at Union High School. We can't sit and wait any longer, like the nation can't sit and wait for compensation to be raised and equity to be realized in the classrooms. And lastly, privatization. You know, it's amazing to me. I just can't believe the fact that we're sitting in a school that did charter, as Melissa said, a charter school, has a bus line that's been privatized, has janitors, or excuse me, custodians who have been privatized, has substitute teachers who used to make a decent living and have a pension from that day in school. That's all been obliterated. But worse than that, there are privatization aspects in the school. What is a privatization aspect? Well, I'll tell you one specifically. Ottawa High School, who lost students last year, according to MLive, had an announcement in an article that the Ottawa Hills students would have a privatized curriculum from NFA, which is a company that you must have voted on to pay to purchase the curriculum for Ottawa Hills. Now, we as a group are diametrically opposed to anything privatized. Concessions, bus drivers, and specifically curriculum because we know the business mind is reflected through that curriculum. Is my time up?
Yeah. Mr. Prince, your time's up.
All right. Kyle Lim, Anne Swisher, and Malik Harvey?
Welcome, Mr. Lim.
May I begin with you? Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here with Grand Rapids for Education Justice specifically to speak about my concerns over the formation of what we're calling a two-tiered system in Grand Rapids. The characteristics of a two-tiered system that we see is particularly the formation of themed schools that are designed to attract white students, middle-class students, students of sort of standard cognitive ability. And at the same time, we're seeing concentration of poor students, students of color, students with special needs in our neighborhood schools. We had the pleasure of listening to several students speak about the need for increasing racial equity, echoing the words of Dr. King. As I looked up the demographic data for each of the students that were coming from those schools, almost all of them came from schools that were disproportionately white as it reflects in the student data, that were disproportionately middle-class. I'm amazed at what these students were able to come up with in their essays. But at the same time, I asked the question, what's the context? The school, the educational caliber of the schools that they attend that allow them to be doing that? Why didn't we have any black students up here tonight talking about the need for racial equity? Why didn't we have students of color here represented in the acceptance of those awards? I also want to pick up on the point that Jack Prince was just making, which is a huge concern of mine around the incorporation of private curriculum, particularly into schools that are predominantly students of color. The work-based curriculum that is coming out at Ottawa Hills, the career tracks that they're pushing students into are not lucrative ones. Hospitality, homeland security, the biggest department of which is, what's it, when they check you at the airport? TSA, that's the lowest-paid government position, federal government position in the country. And yet, we're pushing students into industries that I feel are designed to exploit poor students, students of color. And at the same time, we're offering these robust curricular options for the other students that attend themed schools. We have made these demands for changes. We also have an array of solutions and we welcome an opportunity to sit with the board and other stakeholders to figure out how we might go about moving that forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Swisher?
Hi, I'm Anne Swisher. I worked in Grand Rapids Public Schools for 18 years in special education. And I've been to this board several times. I do want to address the Legislative Committee because if the Legislative Committee is coming up with all these answers, but you're not including teachers, that is a problem because I think teachers have been left out in many different levels. The city of Grand Rapids is giving lots of money to developers, tax breaks. The state of Michigan is giving lots of tax breaks to businesses. And they just can't seem to come up with the money to pay for schools. So you guys are able to come up with money because it's private money to make your little programs, which is great. I know there's kids benefiting from it. But for those districts who don't have the money for that, they're being left out in the dark. Benton Harbor, for example. So as people who are running a district, that is your responsibility too. This is our state. This is our Michigan. This is the future of our state. So every school district in this state should be fighting with the state to get the money that we deserve for our kids. And it's appalling. You're going to sit around and talk about, oh, how nice schools are. This is a serious matter. And this is about our future, but by golly, the corporation's going to get their tax breaks. It's disgusting and it should change. And then I'm going to finish with this. In the business items, it says, "Dream Fund Projects." I don't know if that's a cheeky title or what. If your dream fund is to get the best programming for our kids, stop selecting the kids you're going to educate and letting some kids behind. We should be fighting about increasing the minimum wage for these families. Parents are working their butts off trying to take care of their kids and they can't make a living wage to afford an apartment in town? This is our responsibility as citizens, you guys too. This is our future. So the dream fund that you're talking about here is to fund schools in Michigan. And anybody on this board who isn't going to go down and fight with the state about the funding for this, our schools, you're not doing your job. Because this is our state. These are our kids, every one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Malik Harvey and I just wanted to give my testimony. While I was in high school, I attended a Tier One and Tier Two educational system. I'm from a city called Inkster, which is about 25 to 30 minutes outside the city of Detroit. And during my freshman year of high school, while I attended Inkster High, I earned a 4.1 GPA that year. But I don't feel like that GPA really told the story of just how deep my intellect really is because I was being taught material that I had already learned prior to middle school. It wasn't until my parents took me out of Inkster High and put me into a private school named, it was called Baptist Park Christian School, where I already felt like I was being challenged. My GPA went from a 4.1 at Inkster High to somewhere between a 2.5 or a 2.9 at Baptist Park. Luckily, by the time I graduated Baptist Park, I was able to bring it up to a 3.3. But I know I'm sharing these experiences and these experiences took place in another city, but the same type of problems or issues regarding education that's facing my city is also facing this city as well as countless other cities nationwide. Also, when I spoke on being challenged at my private school, I believe being presented the opportunity to be challenged is something that should be distributed to every student equally, regardless of skin color or social upbringing. If we're not giving these students the equal or proper education they deserve, then I feel like we're cutting their potential for growth as a human being short while also cutting our potential of growth of our nation short. We may be studying the birth of our next grade leader, doctor, surgeon, engineer, school board attendant, teacher, principal, by not giving equal opportunities for these students to be challenged. So to close my testimony, I just want to challenge you all with a question that I hope can be resolved in my lifetime, which is, why do we choose to cut our nation's potential short when the solution is simple? Thank you.
All right. Thank you to all those who spoke this evening. That ends public comment. Do we have any superintendent comments? Dr. Gorman?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. On behalf of the Grand Rapids Public Schools family, I want to extend deepest sympathies to the family and friends of a wonderful community leader, Michael Johnson, Sr. Mr. Johnson was the brother-in-law of Pastor Nathaniel Moody, former GRPS board member, and current Third Ward Commissioner, and brother to First Lady Laura Moody. Mr. Johnson was a proud graduate of the Grand Rapids Public Schools, owner of Brown's Funeral Home, and he was very generous with scholarships to the Grand Rapids Public School students. He was a huge supporter of GRPS, and he'll be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gorman. Board member comments. Ms. Davis, may I begin with you?
Sure. I feel like last month I got to experience quite a few wonderful things going on in the district. At Southwest Community Campus where my daughters attend, they had a family dance. They moved from the daddy-daughter to a family dance, so I was able to attend that. And it was wonderful to meet other families and see the kids. You know, they were with me for like two seconds, and then as soon as they saw their friends, they were like, "See you, Mom." So that was a wonderful experience. And then I was able to attend staff notes performing downtown, and just found that to be what a wonderful display of some of our staff members, teachers, just their talents and their passion for what they do. And then I also found it to be very educational and just well-put-together, so that was a lot of fun. I wasn't able to attend the MLK Assembly that my daughters did at their school, but I did get a video, and just a wonderful experience. My third grader came home with her lines to memorize and was very excited, and just I was very proud of our schools for the celebrations that they did. So, wanted to share that.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
I just would like to congratulate the contest winners as well as every student who made the effort to submit an essay. That is a feat in and of itself, even if they did not per se win. And I'd also like to thank everyone who came out to make public comment tonight. As you know, we may not be able to reply, but we are listening, and we want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Reverend Matias.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank those who spoke publicly, and just excited to see what our future is going to bring with our new superintendent and moving our district forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ross.
No comment.
Ms. Lewis?
No comment.
And no comment for me. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.